For the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, you can be seated. On the phone, we have Chairman Long, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, all right, thank you Matthew, glad you were able to call in. All right, please remember to silence your cellphones and any other mobile devices. First on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items two through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by... Let me stop here for a moment, let me... Number one, excuse me, the approval of the agenda.
All move it.
All right, moved by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you for that, sorry, jumping ahead here. Consent agenda, items two through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number two is approval of amendments of the October 8th, 2024 meeting. Number three is approval of claims. Number four from board administration is approval to lift the tax suspension for MK. Number five from the county auditor is to receive the county recorder's report of fees collected. Number six from the county treasurer is to approve property tax refund request for parcel ending in 4005 in the amount of $969. Number seven from human resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions and the approval of the 2025 Delta dental renewal. And lastly, number eight from secondary roads is to approve the underground utility permit for Mid-America. And I'll move that.
Second.
Moved by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0. With that, we have a few moments to our 4:45 PM set time. Yeah, yep, item nine is Mrs. Shayla Moore here from the warming shelter. I do not see her in the audience. Hello, come on up. Right, so we're at, if you're ready, if you need... Number nine from the warming shelter, Shayla Moore, all right, yep.
Hello, thank you guys for having us today. As part of our efforts to kind of work towards sustainability and working with the city, we are asking for your approval to allocate some funds towards the shelter. We currently received a $150,000 one-time... A $150,000 one-time donation from the city of Sioux City and efforts have been made to reach out to partnering communities just to kind of hold our community accountable for helping those in need. A lot of these folks that we are serving at our homeless shelter are from the local area, the tri-state area. And so we're reaching out to not just you folks, but several different entities that we believe should assist us with this effort. What questions do you have?
Okay, thank you for being here and presenting. Let's open up for any board questions. If they may have any. Okay. Chairman Long, any questions you have?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, do I hear a motion, any motions on this item?
So typically, the county does not participate with nonprofits locally.
Correct.
It's only to leverage like federal or other funds. So... I'm not going to break that tradition or cycle on that. So I'm sorry to say I won't support funding for this.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, with that.
Yeah, if we're sort of going down the line, first off, thank you for what you do. And for the warming shelter, I know that you're standing in the gap for some of our most vulnerable citizens. And I think we need to acknowledge as a board the appreciation for what it is that you do. The tough predicament becomes over the last nine or 10 years. And I can remember almost a decade ago, just for some context, very laudable nonprofit that the county had prior to two or three of us taking office had supported. And it just became between the 59 local nonprofits, how do we differentiate between one versus another, the Gospel Mission and others? And so we kind of drew that differentiation based on what Supervisor Raddick said, which is leveraging federal state dollars. Or I would also say if there's a non-tax pass-through and we're a conduit. So for example, the Agape Center was one that we took opioid settlement funds. And then the other would just be if we're asked to act as the pass-through for a loan grant, or not grant, a loan of funding, then that's something that is a possibility and could still, in your situation, be as a 501(c)(3) a possibility. But for those reasons, I would just echo, again, wish we could get there. But when it's tax dollars and nonprofits, that's typically been where the county's been at and where I would continue to be.
With that, if I don't hear a motion, no motion, okay, then that item would die on board. Okay, all right. Moving on, we're a little ahead of our 4:45 PM set time for planning and zoning. Yeah, that's true, yeah, let's do secondary roads, yeah, so Mark, you want to come on up?
First item we have is to set resolution on load limits on bridges. We've completed our 2024 round of inspections. I think there were six bridges that had reduced ratings. No new bridges were added to the list. And it's a lot smaller than the 60-some bridges that we had 10, 12 years ago. So we've made some progress, still got a few to go, but I recommend approval of the resolution.
I'll move it. I'll second it. Moved by Raddick, second by Bittenger. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion passes 5-0. Item B is to receive quotes for PCC patching and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
Every year, we have a small PCC patching contract. Typically, these are pavement areas that suffered blowups over the course of the summer. Our staff goes out, removes all the loose material and puts in temporary patching material. But prior to winter, it's a good idea to go out, saw them, do a full-depth patch repair. So we put together a quick quotation for this. We're letting it as an emergency product or project under 30940A, I believe it is, out of the code. We don't want to leave these through the winter because there's a possibility that the snowplows will pop out chunks of the broken concrete around the repair. It's better to have these done and complete before we go into winter. I'll read off the total price. The first quote is from Cedar Falls Construction, Waterloo, Iowa. 56421. Next one is from Knife River of Sioux City. Total bid price, $114,380. 114380. And the final bid is from Concrete Plus of Sioux City. Their bid price, $147,802. Pretty obviously, the low was is...
Mark, you said 147,802, correct?
147.
Yeah, 147, okay.
The lowest Cedar Falls Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. Thinking pretty safe in recommending the bid... Oh, first you have to receive the bids.
Right. Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, to receive. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes 5-0.
Then I would recommend award to Cedar Falls Construction.
I'll move that.
Second, moved by Raddick, second by Bittenger. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Final one we had is to award the bid for Project LB-K19. And the low bid on the structure was Dixon Construction. There was a mathematic error on there that you noticed. It came in at 355,000, so it was a little lower at that point. But I recommend award of the bids to Dixon Construction.
I'd move a word of the bids to Dixon Construction and approve the resolution to direct county engineer to sign the contract and the bond.
Second.
All right, motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. With that, we still have a few minutes, let's move on to reports from committee meetings. Does anyone have any reports of committee meetings?
I have a few things, but we're about to our set time.
Yeah, we got one minute. Mine will be real quick, I just have one, we just have the WCICC meeting. I just want to give a shout out to all of our employees working there. We had a great report of how our employees went above and beyond and with some of the updating for the data center and spending time, just extra hours putting in the labor just to make sure things are done right. Cables are run, connection, new equipment's upgraded, so thank you to that. And then also Kenny, thank you to Building Services for some of your employees helping our IT department just with the extra labor and moving things around, so thank you. John gave a shout out to your department as well, so we appreciate both departments and the employees working hard just to get things done, so... All right, well with that, it's 4:45 for our set time for the planning and zoning. Mr. Priestley can come forward.
Good evening Supervisors, this is again the second and requested final public hearing for the rezone of the 1.14 acre parcel in order to facilitate the transfer from one property owner to another to sell that piece of land. And we put on there just kind of an expectation of staff to see it through, that they make the parcel combination. Ultimately, it gets rezoned, it sits there as an independent, or it could sit there as an independent parcel. We want to make sure that they invoke the requirement to contact the assessor, make sure it's combined and becomes involved with the other parcels, so...
All right, thank you, sir. With that, I will move the public hearing to be open.
You're just saying the public hearing's open?
Yeah. Yep, public hearing's open. If anyone is here to speak to this, to this particular agenda item.
Hearing now, Mr. Chairman, move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
All right, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, all right, passes 5-0.
I'd approve, I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance as the final reading.
Second.
All right, any discussion for the discussion, all right. Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson, to approve. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0.
I'll move to waive the third reading.
Second.
All right, motion by Raddick, second by Taylor to waive the third reading of the ordinance. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes 5-0.
And then I'll move to adopt the zoning ordinance map amendment rezon with the condition that the rezoned area parcel number ending in 0002 be combined with Lot 1 of the Baker's Addition Acres subdivision, excuse me.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, to approve the zoning ordinance map amendment. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Priestley, for that. Going back to reports on committee meetings. Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, we had an LEC meeting this afternoon. Today was the final completion date for the LEC. We had quite a few updates. When we had substantial completion, there were originally 30 punch list items that grew to about 48 punch list items. As of today, I believe we're down to 10 or 11 punch list items. Quite a few of those are outside, some touch-up painting on light poles, some touch-up painting on the security fence, grass seeding around the perimeter, which obviously with the ongoing drought that we have, it's just not very conducive to trying to get any grass to grow. And so we're looking at potentially kicking the can in next spring on that. The roof was complete on Friday. They had to have the manufacturer come out and do a walkthrough for the warranty to make sure that everything was up to snuff. There are a few corrective items that they have to do, I'm told they're very minor. They're going to get that done here very shortly, so then the warranty will transfer on this roof. The seismic bracing report, we have not seen that from Housman. And actually, it was pretty interesting that last week they told us that they were sending us the report and that they had an attachment, and we got it, there was no attachment. So we just called them and said, hey, you must have failed to upload the attachment with the report. And that's a week ago. And we haven't seen it. So our woes continue with Housman and them getting the proper things that we need. They did give us a bunch of the warranty information that Kenny and his people were looking for. Unfortunately, there were things in there that Housman had not filled out right that GGA and the Baker Group caught, and so they sent that back to make sure. Because when it comes to these warranties, there are start dates that these things kick off, and that's when the warranty starts, and some of that information they did not have right. And so we're going to make dang sure that anything that we have, the warranties are going to kick off right, and we're going to do everything right to make sure that we keep those warranties in compliance. The testing and balancing, we had a good meeting with the TROBA last week. They have identified two fixes. They're going to run some through their drawings to figure out which fix is going to be. I'm told that they are very simple, they're all done from the roof. And so won't impede anything that has to do with the inmates or any of the staff out there. And I guess that would be, I think, the best news of all was that Friday night, the sheriff's office moved the inmates out to the LEC and Sheriff Sheen's back there, so if he wants to talk more about that during citizen concerns or something, he sure can. But I'm told it went without incident, it took them seven hours, plus or minus. A lot of people were involved with that, and so we're very happy that there were no incidents and that the inmates are out there. So the next LEC meeting, because we moved this up a week, will be November 5th at 3 o'clock. So it's kind of a three-week gap here, but it'll be November 5th at 3 o'clock down here at the courthouse. And we did have recording this week, so everybody should be back. We had issues last week, but there should be recordings of this meeting, so... Another thing on, from the Conservation Board, a Conservation Board meeting Thursday night, we had a recap over about Nature Calls, which is their biggest fundraiser event. I was able to attend, it was a great night. They raised significantly more money than they had a year ago, even though attendance was down a little bit. So they were very happy for that. One of the things that they had identified that they wanted to fundraise for was a new raptor house out at Dorothy Pico. And they ended up, somebody that was at Nature Calls said, well, I'd be willing to donate the materials for that. So we're like, wow, that was fantastic. Well then, he knew a contractor and that contractor said, you know what, I'll donate building it. So that's just one great thing that came out of that, don't have to fundraise. We've got two parties willing to do that, and that's great. But the better news, or another very positive thing from the Conservation Board, was there's an Iowa County Conservation Peace Officers Association, and they have an award for one officer statewide that's Ranger of the Year. And there's four criteria that they have to meet, I think three of the four. And we actually had an officer that actually met all four criteria. And that's Eric Lindsay from our Southwood Park at Smithland. And so there were seven applicants statewide, and he was selected for Ranger of the Year. And so very proud of him and the work that he's done. Some of the things was he had rescued someone during the flood at Smithland. He was part of that shootout in Hornick and was assisting law enforcement down there. He'd had to deploy an AED for somebody in the park. And so he's really done incredible work this past year, so we're very proud of him and appreciate him being part of the Conservation Department. So very positive things moving forward, and that is all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, anything? Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to item 13, which is citizen concerns. You want to come up with an address, you can come forward, just name and address, come on up.
So it's Bob Sheen at 2419 East Hallway here in Sioux City. I'm sorry, I can't speak to you, if I don't hear you or you don't hear me, please, let me know. So I'm also the president of the Warming Shelter Board. And so we had to make a very hard decision earlier this year to close, but we were able to then get the city to move and to give $150,000. They also said the same thing you did, that they as a public entity and as a government entity cannot give money, or they felt they could not. But we don't feel like we're a nonprofit. We feel like we're a service to you. And so that's why she'll have made this presentation for you to mull over. So I would ask, maybe this is the right spot, who do we work with? So can you give us some direction? Because that would be important to us, to leave today here. With the direction that you would say, well, why don't you check with this part of the county and maybe they can help you? Or something like that. Okay?
All right. I think one area you could potentially look at is the SHIP Sioux Land Human Investment Partnership. I would say reach out to them and see what they have, because they work a lot with the state in different grants.
Well, we work with SHIP a lot.
Do you already work with SHIP?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if you did that or not, okay. That would be my recommendation, off the top of my head, so...
Nothing else that the county can do? Because we are a service to people who live in this county, not a nonprofit that sort of is subsidized, but works with real people that are yours. And so we have no other choice but to raise that money, which we have. Our budget is about $750,000 a year. And so we asked you for a smaller amount because we don't feel that we want to combine those pieces. But we need to know how in the county, what can we do? You have no answers.
At the moment, no, I, there's nothing else that I would have other than going to SHIP, that would be my best route.
Okay.
But that's what my, that's my wits at the moment.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else that can speak during citizen concerns?
One Sheen to follow another Sheen. And just to dispel everybody's questions, I think, I don't, I can't speak for Bob, but I do know that one of the most common questions that I get asked is how I'm related to Bob Sheen. And I think from speaking to Bob over the years, he gets that question asked a lot. And he is about the only Sheen in the area that I'm not related to, because, correct me if I'm not mistaken, Bob, you came from somewhere east of here to go to, was it Briar Cliff? Yeah, so there, now, all your curiosities have been laid to rest, we're not related. So I just, I came here to talk about the operation from Friday night. Typically, as you know, I don't typically come here with anything prepared, but I did prepare a little bit of a letter here that I would just ask if you guys would want to receive it.
Move to receive.
So that it's part of the public record.
Okay, motion by Taylor, second by Nelson, receive.
And then I'm just going to read this first, and then I can elaborate on some things and answer some questions if any of you have this, but it's a letter of appreciation.
Let me take the vote.
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. That was seconded by Nelson.
My excitement to give this news, I apologize, I couldn't hardly wait. The Woodbury County Sheriff's Office has been training and preparing to move inmates into the new Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center for over a year due to construction delays. The operation of moving over 200 inmates from one facility to another is a high-risk and massive undertaking. Our entire staff have been worked, have been asked to work overtime, take on additional responsibilities, and at times, adjust their work hours. All this has been done without complaint. Our staff are dedicated professionals committed to public safety, and the citizens of Woodbury County should be extremely proud of their efforts. I know I am. On Friday, October 11th, the Woodbury County Jail at 4077th Street was closed at 8:00 PM. Then at approximately 9:30 PM, we met at the new law enforcement center to conduct a briefing on this operation. The operation involved approximately 70 Woodbury County correctional officers, 40 deputies and reserve deputies, five nurses, one mental health therapist, two Iowa Department of Correction prison guards, Woodbury County Emergency Management, Sioux City Fire and Rescue, Sioux City Police Department, WCICC, and Woodbury County Building Services. Assisting the sheriff's office by agreeing to cover calls in the county was the Iowa State Patrol and the Sergeant Bluff Police Department. The first inmates were moved out of the old jail starting at approximately 11:15 PM and were transported to the new jail at 370128th Street. Over the next seven hours, a total of 210 inmates were moved to the new jail without incident. It's an amazing feat that we were able to move all of these folks, who many, more than what you might think are what we would consider maximum risk inmates. And we had absolutely, the only incident that occurred throughout the night was one inmate spit on another inmate as we were moving them towards the buses. There was no assaults on officers, there was no uses of force, it was just, it was an amazing night. The last inmate was walked into the new jail on Saturday, October 12th at approximately 6:15 AM. The new jail was opened and fully operational by 8:00 AM. The first new booking took place at approximately 9:50 AM. I would like to recognize several individuals who have put in countless hours preparing for this moment. First, Chief Deputy Tony Wingert has been working on this project since the summer of 2018. He has been the hands-on representative for the sheriff throughout the entire project. His leadership was integral in the project's overall success. Sergeant Jorma Schwedler, who's a correctional officer that's in charge of our risk team, was tasked with the planning and preparation with all aspects concerning inmates inside each facility. He then planned the training of all correctional staff to efficiently and effectively carry out the plan. The importance of his work on this project could never be... and effectively carry out the plan. The importance of his work on this project could never be overstated. And I I could go on and on and on about what Jorma did, what Sergeant Schwedler did in preparation, but he was he was very, very key to this this operation going off as successfully as it did. Lieutenant Don Armstrong was tasked with planning the route to safely transport all inmates with minimal disruption to the traveling public. He successfully coordinated with multiple agencies to accomplish this mission. Captain Harlow is our jail administrator and was assisting Chief Deputy Winger in overseeing the project and managing resources needed for the mission. Lieutenant Yule and Lieutenant Blanchard have been the spearheads of getting things accomplished at the new jail. Over the last two months, these two lieutenants have been working 60 to 80-hour weeks, work weeks, to have the building ready for the move. Their dedication to getting this move completed has been outstanding. And I would just remind people that these two lieutenants are salaried employees and not received compensation for all the extra hours put into this mission. And and it wasn't like I was asking them to do this. They just knew what needed to be done and for the last several months have just gotten it done. Lieutenant Filer is the longest-tenured member of the sheriff's office with just over 40 years of service. And while everyone was focused on the new building, Lieutenant Filer was tasked with staying at the old jail and making sure the operations there were being taken care of. Her role at times may have been overlooked, but this mission does not get completed without her overseeing the old jail and allowing the others to focus on the new one. To every other member of the sheriff's office, thank you for all your efforts during this long process. You all do exceptional work in nearly impossible situations on a daily basis, and I could not be prouder of each one of you. A thank you also goes out to the family members of our sheriff's office staff. Your sacrifice in supporting your loved ones is not forgotten and is deeply appreciated. A special thank you to the Law Enforcement Center Authority members, the Board of Supervisors, and the City Council for their roles in seeing this project through. It was not always smooth sailing, but they stayed the course while weathering some storms and were thankful for each of them. And finally, thank you to the citizens of Woodbury County who made this project possible. Without you, the taxpayer, none of this ever happens. And then two things I want to just touch on briefly and Mark brought it up, but to Kenny's staff with Building Services and to the WCICC staff, John Malloy's staff. Kenny, I acknowledged you on Friday night. You had stepped out of the room and didn't get to hear it. But this man and the people that work for him, they have been absolute rock stars from the time we got substantial completion until Friday night. We worked hand in hand with Kenny and his staff round the clock. They they put in so many hours doing stuff that wouldn't probably be normally asked of them. And I don't think I ever heard Kenny say no. It was like, we're on it. We'll get it. We'll do it, including a curve ball that was thrown at you on Thursday to change the ASAP room, and they got it done. And and John's staff, I mean, they were there were people pulling cables Friday afternoon up until 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon to get this thing rolling. And as I told our staff Friday night, if we're lucky, this will be the largest law enforcement operation that any of us will ever be a part of. And it went off better than I think any of us could have even even imagined that it would go off. I still, as I sit here, I'm stunned and I I don't say it lightly. I mean, it was it was amazing how efficient and how effective it went. Chairman Wick rode with me for about the first three trips around. I think he was with me till probably 1:00, 1:30 in the morning, if I remember right. And he kept commenting that he could not believe how well orchestrated it was. But that's that's a direct result of the efforts that all those those staff members of our sheriff's office and the other agencies put into this. And and again, everything that I hear now over the, you know, we've been in there for a few days now. It's it's running about as smoothly as we could expect it to run. There's going to be some hiccups and some some growing pains as we as we get in there. But just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you to the public. Thank you to those people that assisted us in being able to accomplish this on Friday because it was it was causing many of us some sleepless nights because you never know what's going to happen when you're moving dangerous people, putting them out into the public. And so and the good news is I don't I don't think we really interrupted anything throughout the night. No media showed up. No citizens, no citizens really came to to gawk or pay attention. I mean, we were visible when we were moving inmates, but but we were only moving people for about 15 minutes at a time. And so we tried to have that minimal impact on the community. Didn't see a lot of chatter on social media, which was all planned. It was part of the plan. But I I felt it's something that I'm extremely proud of our staff. So any questions?
Don't really have a question, but did want to congratulate you and the department on that and everybody involved. Obviously, it was a huge undertaking. You know, one we've talked about years, years past, planning and getting to this point, you know, what was it, five years ago, six years ago? And Dennis and I, you know, kudos to Dennis, who can be here, obviously, to go, we went to every city in the county and we made a commitment to taxpayers. Yeah, it takes 63 cents per thousand to pass this. But as a board, we promise to do everything we can to make sure we're using outside funds or federal funds to pay for it. And to this point, we have not raised a levying penny for the LEC. So again, it's it's great to see it open, great to see it in use, hope that it's much safer for all.
It is. It is.
The guards involved, all the police that come in and Sally Port, a new guest to visit this facility. Slightly disappointed it only took three hours to get your first new guest.
Well, we didn't technically open till 8:00, so it was a little less than two hours. And we do have a plaque getting made to commemorate who that is. We I won't publicly say.
It's like your first dollar bill on the wall.
But we're going to put it up there so that maybe 50 years from now, when somebody asks, who was the first person ever to get booked in here, we'll know who we'll know who it is.
But yeah, again, I'm appreciative to actually get to see this before I leave. You know, I never thought that it would take this long, of course, and and it's not your fault. It's not anyone's fault here. But I'm so glad that it went off safely. Everyone's healthy and well to do such a huge undertaking in one night. I know a few of the guys personally involved and they they said their feet hurt more than anything.
Yeah.
But yeah, I just want to thank everybody involved and I'm really appreciative to get here. So thank you.
One thing I'm appreciative, Sheriff Sheehan, is just the cooperation for Kenny and then with, you know, John Malloy. When we go to some of the ISAT conferences, I sit around with other county supervisors and I hear where they're fighting against the sheriff, they're fighting against the auditor, or the treasurer's office, or the engineer and they're butting heads. But what I love to say is, well, here at Woodbury County, yeah, we're not perfect. However, we're we're working together to get the job done. And it's amazing what can we get accomplished when no one cares to get the glory for it. And I was going to say, thankful to you and Kenny and for John for just working together, leading your staff and for the staff members, man. I mean, it's just great to hear. Mark texted me pretty early Saturday morning, hey, everybody's got moved. And I woke up from a sound sleep and it's like, man, thank the good Lord that everything went off without a hitch and all those prayers work. And our church was praying that everything would go off well. And so I just say thank you for thank you for that and.
And and I should say, it wasn't just within the county either. The, you know, like I mentioned, Sioux City PD, the Iowa State Patrol, Sergeant Bluff PD, Iowa DOT. When we had the the emergency sent, the emergency operations center out at Wit, we had that up and functioning and rolling. And they were able to keep eyes on with with the cameras and DOT cooperated with us and shut down some of the the cameras just during the operation, just for the safety and security. We had some temporary cameras that we put up. The Iowa Department of Corrections loaned us a bus and two two prison guards. And you're right, it was just, everybody just had their eye on the on the prize and everybody was working towards that goal. So and miraculously, the city was a rather quiet night on a Friday night, which is rare. I, as Ron and I were driving at one point, I think it was about 12:30, and I looked on the call screen and there were only two calls. One, it was a medical call and a Sioux City officer just working security at at the Hard Rock. So there were no calls. I guarantee you, if you look at any Friday, Saturday night at the call screen, there's typically 20 calls. So the good Lord was watching down on us in a lot of different ways because that was the one thing we were worried about is if there was a whole bunch of arrests, we had the jail closed. So we didn't have to deal with any of that. So just super thankful. So.
Do any of your guys miss the old jail?
No, no. And I and I can tell you, I went up there Sunday. I went up there Saturday. I went home and slept for a couple hours, then I went back Saturday morning, probably about 11:30 or 12:00, just to see how everything was going. And then I went back again Sunday evening to be able to talk to the night shift because it would have been the same shifts because they work Friday, Saturday, Sunday and then the net and alternate. But the sergeants were saying that they could already tell the morale was different because it is such a safer facility. And if you've never been in the old jail, you wouldn't really appreciate. But when you're in the new one and you see how it's laid out and all of the different safety mechanisms that are built into it, that most of them you don't even see, but if you work there every day, you know. And so I just hope that that continues on and it it definitely has a different feel when you're when you're in it. Even even I could feel it Saturday when I was helping pass out meals and stuff to the sections. Once you get out of the long-term area, it's it has just a kind of a more eased feel because of the safety features that are outside that area. But yeah, it's different. So no, I don't think anybody misses it. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other citizen concerns? All right. Seeing none. All right. What's going on? Number 14, board concerns? Any board concerns?
I had a question for Mark, since you're here. Buchanan Avenue, it's been, obviously, been in the news. What what is the traffic count? And I've had calls this summer and it was kind of interesting. You read through the comments and I think back to some of the phone calls that I've taken over the summer. And, you know, the dust control comes up, which is funny because we talked about that here, you know, a month and a half ago. And you just, we we try to do the right thing. We try to be helpful and it's just some people appreciate it and some, you know, don't. And so it's, but I was just curious what the traffic count is on that portion of the road.
Yeah, the portion between Correctionville Road and where Buchanan Avenue goes north is 330 vehicles per day. Every every four years, we get traffic counts and the county engineer is able to select certain roads that he would like to have a special count taken on. And each of those dust control routes got one of those special counts in the 2023 study that the DOT did. 2023 was our most recent count. We just got the map back in July, I think it was.
And what's the DOT's recommendation for paving as far as traffic count is like 150?
Iowa DOT really doesn't have one. There's a number of engineering publications out there. And typically, the recommendation to go to paving is around 250 to 300 vehicles per day. That's the point at which a gravel road ceases to be economical to maintain as.
And we're at 330, is that what you said?
We're at 330 in that one segment. We're over, I want to say it's at least 220 on the stretch of 120th Street and Barker. You know, that's it. It's kind of at both ends that the the peak counts are. I think it's 180 on the Buchanan north to south. But you also have to remember, we have traffic going both ways. There are some going out to D12, some going down to Correctionville Road. So I think our, it alternates. I can't remember what Glen Allen Road is. On the southeast side of town is another one where the stretch between Elk Creek Road and Old Lakeport, the 2019 count was 300. And then when you get up around 141 South to 190th Street, that we usually take account in where all those homes are. And that one is always over 200 as well. It declines a little bit in the middle, but we still have 150 vehicles a day that are running through the the center of Glen Allen. I think Elk Creek Road was was 180. And I and I know one of the aggravations for these folks are particularly a couple of the people that have lived out there a long time. When they bought their places, they were told it was in the five-year program. And realtors talk or used to talk a lot of the time about how, you know, if if you build out there, the paving will come. And it's it's not as economical to pave today as it was in the 1990s and the early 2000s. 2006 is about where we saw a real increase in the cost of asphalt paving. And that made it uneconomical to do some of those upgrades that people would like to see. But our operator did go out, give it a full blading on on Monday. It looked like I drove the road today. It's better. It could still be better. I'm I'm hopeful that he'll be available and be able to hit it again Friday before before the weekend. And, you know, we were talking about it when we discussed the dust control program. There there's a split of opinion. Some people would rather see us blade it twice a week and they aren't as concerned about the dust. We have other people who are strongly concerned about the dust. I think it depends on which side of the road you're on sometimes because north side and east side tend to catch more than their fair share. That's where the prevailing winds are. I haven't really broken it out, the folks we've discussed it with, but I do know there's there's that difference of opinion on on whether we're getting the bang for the buck. We did, we did tear up that section that had gotten bad using the new product we were trying this summer. We'd have to mark that one as a failed experiment. It just doesn't hold up well in that traffic count. And again, the reason we're trying new products out there in some cases is to try and get away from the chloride products, which are by far the most effective dust control products we have. But like we talked about, people have concerns about those being corrosive on their vehicles, trailers and and equipment going up and down the road. Someday, hopefully, they'll develop that golden syrup that can go out there and be cheaper than chlorides and and not not bother cars. But, you know, we hope people can be patient and understand why we try different things some years. And, you know, we tried a product called Permazym last year, which was really fairly successful. It was supposed to be a base stabilizer. And we found it didn't work as well on that as we had hoped, but it it did do a fairly good job of controlling the dust. We actually got almost 18 months out of it in performance at the cost of one round of dust control. I want to, we'll kind of want to look and see what it looks like next spring and see what new type of treatment might be appropriate there. But again, we learned a little bit this year with one product that wasn't effective. Well, at this point, unless there's a change in the dust control policy, next spring, the crews will be out prepping and squirting roads again.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other board concerns?
Just want to let you know, I won't be here next week. I have parent teacher conferences. As a teacher, those are hard to get out of nor what I want to, but duty calls. So thank you.
Supervisor Taylor?